On the 21st of July 2021, we recognize
Recording in progress.
We recognize that Claudia is out sick today, and so I think Megan is helping us from the IT department. So I think just from a roll call perspective, I'll just recognize the council as I see them on my screen. I see Kelly Menke, I see Zach Geary, I see Chris Chenoweth, I see Sal Peralta, and I see Adam Garvin. Remy is traveling this evening and wasn't going to be able to be in a place where she had internet service, so she's not with us today. We also have Susan and Jenny and Amanda and Jeff, and it looks like Larry Sherwood is on with us. And then we have other members of the first topic we're going to have this evening is a report from the MAC PAC. And we've got a few members from the MAC PAC on the line also. So with that being said, I think I'm going to open our discussion on programming the McMinnville Programming Advisory Committee, the MAC PAC, and turn it over to Susan and Jenny to lead us in a presentation from what that good committee's been doing. So Susan, Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor. That was a great introduction, and now you know why we just call it MAC PAC. It's a bit of a tongue twister. So you did the intros for us, that's great. We do have, it looks like, two people from MAC PAC on here. One is Meredith Maxfield, and she is the co-chair, one of the co-chairs. She's going to be presenting with us tonight, and I think I saw Dwayne on here as well, who's on MAC PAC. Jenny and I have been working on this project together, but it really, there really has been a ton of work from a lot of different city staff, including Jennifer Coyar's been invaluable, and Amanda has helped on MOUs and other things. Heather has done a great job of analyzing the sites, and obviously Jeff. And then the whole Parks and Rec and library team have touched this a little bit as well. So it's been a big project. The purpose of tonight is to give you a status report or an update on where we're at with the MAC PAC project. I just want to let you know that everything we're going to be talking about tonight is still on the table for MAC PAC. They haven't ultimately made a recommendation on everything you'll see here. They will be coming later with a final recommendation. So this is, we don't expect any action from you tonight. We don't expect any feedback from you tonight. In fact, we hope you save that for when we bring back the full 19-member committee so that they can hear your feedback as well. Just to remind us why we're here. If you remember, when the council passed the MAC PAC resolution and appointed the 19 members to MAC PAC, we got direction through that resolution to be impactful. And you empowered the committee to be bold and lead the way and continue to build our community with thoughtful input, focus, and leadership. And I will say without a doubt, these volunteers have done that and have really been thinking about the future of McMinnville, and for that, we're really thankful. I thought my screen was going to advance one moment. Let me try that again. Are you still seeing the PowerPoint?
It just came back up.
I'm not able to advance it. Megan, do you have any tips for me? Why I won't advance? There we go. Okay. Sorry about that. The project timeline, I just want to look back for a second and review that in 2017, that's when we first started the facility condition assessment. And that showed, when it came back to you in mid-2018, that several of the buildings in our inventory as a city were at the end of their useful life and were really needing some serious investment in order to be viable or to take a different approach at things. In the 2018 budget, you funded a phase, what we call Phase 1 of a Recreation Facilities Master Plan, and we brought that back to you in mid-2019. And at the time, the consultant looked at whether or not it would be viable to invest in two buildings, being the Aquatics Center and the Community Center, or whether or not it made more sense to combine those two buildings into one new building. And ultimately, what the council directed us to do was look at one new joint facility because there were, at the time, going to be some operational efficiencies that we might be able to capitalize on for that new building. And at the same time, you recognized that there was a lot of overlap between what the library programs and the library does and the senior center. So we looked at all of them together because the programming piece is really one of the most important pieces of this. So then, January 2020, you appointed the advisory committee and the work began. Ultimately, we are designed to come back to you in the fall with the final report. Part of what we wanted to update you on tonight is it may take us a little longer than that. MAC PAC may meet through the fall and come to you a little late fall, early winter. So that's an update for you. Why are we doing this? The facility condition assessment really laid out that we needed to do something. When we kicked this process off, we thought the issues we were addressing were deferred maintenance, aging buildings, the return on investment issue and whether or not investing in these buildings was a good financial decision. And then, like I said, kind of looking at those opportunities to take the programming forward for the next 30 years. What we know now is that we also need to add some other things to that to really take advantage of this process that we're in, you know, asking the community, what do you want to see in terms of programming? Also, when do you want to see us opening? There's, you know, people, through the pandemic, we know that people are really wanting to see our facilities open. We also really wanted to address, and you all had this in the resolution as well, inclusive programming and removing barriers to participation, including the diversity, equity, and inclusion piece. And the partnership opportunities has really grown through this conversation, and that's something that we didn't anticipate blossoming quite as much. The outdoor needs of our community has also come up as a topic of conversation for us. And then also looking at energy savings and green buildings and what those long-term operating efficiencies might do to a building if we're able to capitalize on some of those things. So that's the why we're here. And I am going to turn it over to Jenny now for this slide.
Thanks, Susan. Good evening, everyone. This is a slide that we actually brought to the committee, the MAC PAC committee, to give them a sense of their role in the whole process. And it seemed like it would be good for you all to see as well that MAC PAC has all of these inputs. So inputs through community feedback, through city staff, through a DEI lens, through the architects, finances, any number of things. And they have been, over the last 18 months plus, getting information about all of these things and more. And the concept is that they will then take all of these pieces of information from all of these inputs and come up with a report about programming facilities, the location, financing, and partnerships. And that's the report that we are, you know, planning to present or that MAC PAC is planning to present to city council. One of the things that we wanted to make really clear of with, to MAC PAC, is that they are in charge of the decision-making of what goes into the report. So they would, you know, there would be some turning to the staff to about, you know, wanting our input. And while we did give input, we wanted to make sure that they knew that they were the ones, that we were looking to them for really the decisions in regards to the report. But then we also wanted to make it really clear to them that they were not the final say of everything, that once they come up with a very clear report, that it goes to all of you. And then with some city staff input, and then also then would eventually go out to the voters. So that, this slide did a, we hope did a good job of describing their role to them and does the same for all of you. And part of that input is, was all of these value-driven things that we, that MAC PAC set up. I use the term "we," but it really has been the committee with... Susan and I are just kind of trying to do the background work, but the committee's doing the, making all of the decisions in terms of what do they want the ground rules to be? What do they want their DEI lens to look like? What do they want the project guiding principles to be and the site evaluation criteria? And we've used these, so these were the frame, the framing that started at the beginning of the project that they all created, and then we've used these along the way to make the decisions about the direction moving forward for the report.
Now I have, share my video. Can you see me?
We can't see you, Meredith. We can see your name.
The co-host says I, it says the co-host is blocking my video. So I can just talk, though, that's fine. You don't have to see me. Hopefully, some of these faces look familiar to you and to our community. These are the faces of MAC PAC. There are almost, oh, here, I can share my video now. Hi. There are almost 20 members of us, and we represent all sorts of different interests and communities and neighborhoods within McMinnville. And it has been a really wonderful experience being a part of MAC PAC. I am one of the co-chairs. And, you know, these are... Oh, my goodness, can you hear me?
Yes.
My screen just went blank. I don't know why it did that. All right. Go ahead. I can't see anything. This is strange. I don't know if my kids were messing with the laptop. Well, I'll just keep going. And Susan, if you want to tell me when you changed the slide?
Yes, I will.
So maybe now I don't want to share my videos since you can't, since I can't see what you're seeing. So MAC PAC, it's been really wonderful because we, we got a bunch of people together that love McMinnville. We all feel passionately about what the city offers, and we wanted to all give input. And we've dedicated time, not only in our meetings once a month, but also outside of our meetings, preparing for them. You know, we had two in-person meetings when the pandemic hit, and then we had to move to Zoom, and we had to pivot like everyone else. But we, I think we canceled our April meeting in 2020. And then we had a Zoom meeting, and we kind of, we said to MAC PAC, you know, what do we want to do? The world's in crisis. Do we want to keep meeting? Do we want to pause? And it just, the response was a resounding, of course, we want to keep meeting. We, more than ever, we can't wait to get back together. Can't wait to meet as a community, and we can't wait to keep dreaming big about the potential for our town. We use technology to help kind of bridge some of the gaps that Zoom provided. Like you can see, there's an image of a graphic bar chart. They, the staff had us use this app, Pull Poll Anywhere. And so, you know, instead of the old-school stickers on a poster, we could just respond on our smartphone and immediately see the responses on our screen, which was super helpful. We also were able to use, the architects had us use Miro, and they could, they gave us, you know, conceptual layouts of the buildings and then also mockups of what they would look like. And we could do these electronic post-it notes, and we could write comments, and people could write comments on our comments in real time. And it really sped up our discussion. We also went on a few tours of other facilities, and we were physically distanced, masked, and we did what we needed to stay safe, also keeping this project moving forward. We, as a committee, also, we had to form several subcommittees because a lot of times, we needed to go more in-depth than we could in our monthly meeting. So the first subcommittee that we created was a performance space subcommittee. You know, the Community Center has been a go-to for inexpensive or free large community events, like school holiday performances. And so we, our subcommittee really dug into if that is something that this facility should continue to offer and if our city as a whole should continue to offer it at this time. We also had a subcommittee that dedicated a lot of time to aquatics and looked into our partnerships and our stakeholders and kind of what the needs were for our community, and they made a recommendation for MAC PAC. We had a library subcommittee that was created to look into whether or not the structure of the current library could meet our future needs. And most recently, we created a finance subcommittee that we, we know finances are a pretty big deal. I'm on the Town Budget Committee. And we, we're aware that we are not operating in a vacuum and that our city, we need, we want to give you a recommendation that includes ideas for how to not only finance our building, but also the operating costs. And so you'll, hopefully, we'll have a good product to give you to save the city council some time. I'll turn it back over to Susan.
Thanks, Meredith. So given that background of the process and the roles and the structures, ultimately, what you'll be hearing when we come back with the final recommendation is about the programming piece, what the library and the rec facilities will offer to our community. We're talking about the locations of those facilities, the spaces and designs of those facilities, and then potential funding mechanisms, like Meredith mentioned, both for the capital piece, construction, and also for the ongoing operational piece. So we're going to give you a little information about what we have already looked at, starting with the senior center. This is one of our newest buildings, and from the facility condition assessment, it was in pretty good shape structurally. So we knew we had good bones there. And again, this is one of those buildings that through COVID, we know how important this is to our community. And this is the first time I'm going to announce publicly that the senior center is going to open, reopen on August 23rd. So we are getting staff in and trained, and we'll be opening, and we're really looking forward to seeing those folks back. We do think that the future of senior centers is going to look a little different, and it will evolve. And we want to meet the needs of seniors now and for 30 years into the future. What that means is just a few structural changes to the facility. Jim Cavillage, who you'll also be hearing from at the final report and is our architect on this, called it a radical refresh for the senior center. And so what we have been working on, and this is all very conceptual at this phase, but really integrating better with the park environment that the senior center is sitting in. You know, we've been talking about maybe an indoor greenhouse or a courtyard. There's some tricky issues with the internal circulation for folks where you have to go through rooms to get to other rooms, having a dedicated fitness room, the parking lot and some of the circulation where pedestrians have to walk between their car and the front of the building isn't great. And then also redesigning that entry has that pull-through that almost looks like a drive-thru bank actually causes some issues with the traffic through there and pedestrian conflicts. So we want to kind of clean that up a little bit and put automatic doors on the building. And then also thinking about, one of the successful programs over there is the Wartman Cafe, and we know we can add some space to that dining room area and really capitalize on the popularity of that program and get some more people in there. So again, we're really just looking at conceptual drawings at this point. This is the first concept that we've seen of the senior center. And you can see, we really are just barely starting to look at outdoor spaces and maybe some more outdoor activities and really implement some of those things spatially that we defined as wanting to have in our vision of the future of the senior center. It's almost exactly in the same footprint as it is in this concept. So we're not talking about a huge footprint enlargement, but just improving some things and modernizing some things and really making the space more useful and more appealing to all generations, but mostly for the future of seniors. Jenny?
So the library conversation, there was lots of discussion about, you know, what is possible within a public library in this day and age and what might the committee be interested in for our community overall? And here's some ideas about that. We also talked, it was good to have the architects come through the current library to see the cramped spaces that we have here currently. And so that was helpful to have their input for the committee. And just the, I think sometimes it's, it takes a knowledge of what other libraries are doing to realize the potential of what we might be able to do here in McMinnville. And then we also formed a subcommittee for the library to talk about location. I had a real strong feeling that I wanted to stay within downtown McMinnville, but I felt like it needed to be discussed at the committee level. And so put forth the, a couple of different options, which was, you know, a branch library, a moving out, out of City Park or moving to just a different location in City Park or staying where we are. And that subcommittee surprised me by unanimously deciding that they wanted a new building. And one of the people on that subcommittee stated something about the, thinking about, thinking about the future, thinking about the kids of the future and the grandkids of the future and how the best way to serve the community of the future was actually to start new, given the, you know, how much things have changed since this original building was built in 1912, the first part of it. So that was one of the things that then came to the committee and was also unanimously voted upon. Now, as Susan's done a really good job of stating, these are still conceptual. So this is, you know, something that, that, we, not a final report, still conceptual, but we did have in mind lots of different things. There's a not-so-new, but newer to some idea of library of things, which is all the different things that you might be able to check out from a library other than books, such as hand tools, sewing machines, toys, some of which we currently offer and some which we hope will have a larger space that we can offer more. I know that you've had somebody come to city council to talk about a tool library a couple of different times, and that's something that I'm excited about being able to say yes to at some point. So let's see. Susan, will you go to the next slide? Okay, and so this was the, the basic concept drawing for the new library. And the lower part just kind of gives an idea of wanting to really integrate the Upper City Park with the library so that you, there's, you know, that feeling like you're outdoors even when you're indoors. And then also just the basic design that's... Currently, we have two levels of the library, and it requires a certain number of staff just to, for a safe space. And so we're really looking for a single-level library with more study rooms. The yellow, yellow is for community rooms, so study rooms, meeting spaces, and things that could possibly be accessed after hours. The, and then there's also, we call it building support, but actually, there's some spaces in there that would be used for the library of things. One of the things that is talked about, you know, when you loan things that, other than books, they sometimes require a little bit more maintenance. And so a place where those can actually be maintained, as well as a place where they're highly visible, which is where number 19 is. And then a really open floor plan for most of the collection, most of the book collection, so that, and the computers, so that there's a high level of visibility for both the patrons and the staff. And let's see, what else do I have? And more restrooms is a huge thing. This is something that we get comments about all the time. Possibly a higher visibility along Highway 99, which could be fun for people that are coming into town. You know, just another gateway to the town. And then people, kids and parents being in the children's room and being able to look and see the playground outside. And again, that connection between the outdoors and the indoors. Thanks, Susan.
Can you see where we are, Meredith? Yes, and my screen's working. Okay. But I don't know what that was. The new rec center discussion started with the importance of programming. You know, the difference between an empty gym and an empty pool and an empty exercise room or craft room is, and the difference between those and a full gym and a full pool, it's programming. You know, the city of McMinnville staff does a pretty amazing job programming with its current facilities. You know, they're limited by the spaces and the amenities. You know, for example, the, I don't know if you have children or neighbors who are in the gymnastics program, but it's very popular. I actually had someone today ask me if I had signed my kids up. And part of the reason I haven't is I've been warned. My friend today was saying she sets an alarm to make sure she gets, she calls the rec center the second you can sign up for gymnastics because there's always a waitlist. It's in very high demand. And they're running that program out of a large meeting room in an old armory that has a drop ceiling and a floor that is not meant for gymnastics. So, you know, we talked as a MAC PAC about what kind of program do we want? Well, we know gymnastics is super popular, so we want a space that's made for gymnastics in our future rec center. We want to grow and expand what's currently offered. You can see a list of what's offered. And some of the highlights are that we really want to spend some time with programming for teens. We also want adaptive programming. We want people of all abilities to feel welcome and have a space in our, in our new rec center. I don't know if you've ever tried to go to a swim meet with someone in a wheelchair or with a stroller, but there's no, I'm just blanked on the word, elevator. There's no elevator out there. I tried to bring my four kids to watch a swimmy, and I was wrangling a double stroller that I had to just leave behind the desk and then carry my baby up. And our future rec center is going to meet those needs, and we're excited about it. On the next slide. So after we talked about programming, we gave our, kind of our wish list to the architects, and then we started analyzing locations. The city planner did an amazing job. She took our criteria that we gave her, and she analyzed, I think it was 12 different locations because we knew at the beginning, we knew we needed at least 10 acres, and it's expanded to even 15 acres with all the parking and what for, what we hope to be around the rec center. And after she did an initial analysis, we asked her to look more in-depth at the property south of Albertson's that Linfield currently owns, and then also property near the senior center in Wartman Park. And so she did that analysis. And then as MAC PAC, we decided that we preferred the Linfield property. But more recently, we found out about another property, the McMinnville Water and Light property. That's 27.4 acres. And we just had it analyzed in-depth for us at our last meeting. And we actually ran out of time to kind of vote about how we wanted to proceed, if we wanted to recommend both sites or one over the other. And so that's actually going to be decided at our next meeting. So that's to be continued. Leave you guys, just a little teaser for you for our final recommendation. On the next slide, you'll see that we, we really, we really went big. We're, we, we have a vision for this, for this rec center, and we hope that generations will get to enjoy it for a long time. And we, we had people with all different interests giving input. And we hope that there's a space for people who, you know, are really intense swimmers, but also families who want to just come and have fun in a pool. We want people, you know, we want an expanded place for lifting weights. We want there to be a drop-in childcare center. We're, we're really excited about what our city can offer, what our city government can offer to our, to the members of our town. On the next slide, you'll see, this is a conceptual layout that the architects drew up for us after a lot of analysis. The teal color is aquatics. The kind of, I guess reddish-orange color is community spaces for different classes and childcare-type things. The orange is yellow, our recreation spaces, like gymnastics and the gym. There's purple is staff, gray, some of the gray, the 12s are locker rooms, and some of it is building support. And then other spaces are just, some of the yellow is just the lounge and how to walk through it. And you can see, we planned for a lot of gray parking. On the next slide. So we also, you know, as I mentioned, we have a subcommittee working on finances, and we're going to come back to MAC PAC,[1787.07] and we're going to come back to MACPAC and then MACPAC will discuss and vote on it. But we've received information about the cost estimates of construction. And also the architects kind of gave us, they gave us comparable project costs so that we know that we're not paying a higher amount than other communities have paid per square foot. We're still waiting to find out about the estimates for operating budgets. And we've been reviewing as a subcommittee, the polling that was presented to city council in May 2021. And we're also discussing how we want to frame new polling. And we want to get more public feedback on what kind of financing options they're interested in. And also, we want to figure out kind of if we had to do phasing for this project, what we'd want to look at, what the priority, priorities are for what needs to be offered first. Susan, are you going to go over this?
I, I, I've got it. While, while we all are aware of the, of the challenges of the last 18 months, I think it's always worthwhile to sort of remind myself and everyone else where we were and where we've, what we've gone through in the last 18 plus months. You know, this, this committee was appointed in January of 2020. And with this goal of, of having a product to deliver to you by fall of 2021. And, you know, two months later, the, everything blew up. And we had the, and, and so many things that were completely unknown and out of our control, and challenges that were not just project challenge, but challenges, but community-wide and challenges. Global pandemic, the location and partnership challenges, the city's budget shortfall, all of these things, you know, thinking about the dream big aspect and the aspirational. While we have continued on that path, it's also very important for us to make sure that we all keep in mind that, that we have had these challenges and these struggles, and that they're not going away. They're, you know, they're still here. We're still struggling with a lot of these things. And we're, it, it, it appears that without a little bit more resolution on some of these things, that this is going to be a, possibly a, a longer and more challenging project that was probably already a challenging project to, to begin with. So we're, while we have this, you know, idea of a, of a report coming to you, we also have this realization of there has been a lot of pretty significant changes in the community and the world since we set off on this path.
So to close this off, we wanted to let you know what we're going to be doing next. The finance subcommittee that Meredith discussed is going to continue to meet. They have a meeting tomorrow. We need further discussion on the location of the rec center. We need to bring forward finalizing the amenities. That would be coming to you as a final recommendation. That polling and public involvement piece is still out there for us to do. And then ultimately, like we talked about at the beginning of this, we really want to bring the full MACPAC committee forward, have a work session and present to you with the architects' help, the final recommendation that MACPAC will be giving to you. So as I mentioned, we're not looking for any feedback. We're not looking for any decisions tonight. We just wanted to let you know where we are as a committee, and also that we might not hit the August, September dates that we had originally planned, and it might be a little later in the fall. So, and I just want to thank Meredith and Ken, both the co-chairs of the committee. They've done a great job. Running a meeting of 19 people over Zoom is not easy, and they've done a great job of, of helping us through that.
Well, thank you, Susan. And I will just open it up to council if there's any clarifications or questions that, that you might have as it relates to MACPAC and the process, where we're at. We know that there's been tremendous, heavy lifting by this committee in various aspects, you know, from, from taking the, the feelings and the comments of community and encapsulating, encapsulizing that into what the buildings might look at. I know a heavy lift right now on the financial piece, because that's going to be a big, a big, it's going to be a big ask of the community. We have to prepare ourselves well for that. But I'll just open it up for council for any clarifying questions that anyone would have at this point. And also recognize that Zach is our council representative with MACPAC, and he's very involved there also. So any questions? Seeing none then, I would just, I, I would, I'd like to thank Susan and, and, oh, go ahead.
Excuse me, I think Sal has a question, but it looks like he's having some trouble with his mic right now. We can't hear you, Sal.
No. Maybe, maybe pull the headphones out and see if you could.
You want to drop your question in the chat, Sal?
Good thought. It's fine, he says.
How many?
Move on. Again, we'll have opportunity again. Sorry for that technical difficulty. Well, with that, Susan and, and Jen, thank you so very much for, for the presentation. Recognizing, Meredith, thank you for your participation in co-chair. And Dwayne, you're on, and, and you guys have been very, very involved. I've tried to get to as many meetings as I can. And it, it's a, it's a power-packed agenda every month for these guys. And I know that they step outside of the committee and do subcommittee work also. So again, Susan and group, thank you so very much. Okay, with that, we have our next item on the agenda this evening. And that's a discussion that we're going to have on annexation and some updating that the planning department put together, some needs to get ourselves more aligned with state statutes and upgrading that annexation process. Again, we know we have so many opportunities laying in front of us over the next number of years. And so to have a process that's easier to navigate for builders and for those that want to have input into that. Heather has just done a phenomenal job. She sent out a, a staff report that's come to us separately this evening. It's not a part of the packet in the, on the, on the webpage, but we have that available. So Heather, we welcome you, and I see you've got a few of your staff in support. We welcome them also. So Heather, go ahead.
Yes, thank mayor and councillors. Just, just to be clear, this is a, been a partnership effort between myself and Amanda, putting these products together for you in the discussion. There's a lot of legal parameters associated with annexation. So we're working in concert with each other. And then the packet that went out to you yesterday, we will get that posted as soon as possible as well on the city council website. So what I wanted to do is share my screen and sort of walk you through what was in the packet. And really, tonight is an opportunity for you guys to ask questions and provide some direction, because what we'd like to do is come back to you with some actions to take in terms of formalizing these processes. I can tell you, we currently have about four property owners who are anxiously waiting to hear what occurs this evening as they have been talking about annexations in the city. They're smaller properties, they're not part of our larger UGB process that we just went through, but they, they are talking about annexation and want to be able to move forward with that process. Let me find my PowerPoint. I'm hoping you see one slide and not both slides. I'm seeing a whole variety of things.
We, we're seeing the one that has the McMinnville city limits and then in purple, the annexation. But we also see your notes over on the side.
Okay, let me see if I can move things around. I'm driving from my office, which has too many monitors for PowerPoints. Is that better?
Yeah, that looks great.
Um, okay. So the purpose of tonight's work session is to discuss this annexation process. We're doing, we're bringing it to you for several different reasons. One, we need to get compliant with state regulations. We'll walk through what that is. And we'll talk about our city charter too, relative to annexations in our local ordinances. And then we just, by adopting the McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan, we did set up an annexation process in that that provided a navigable path. And we want to make sure that that's formalized into our city codes and ordinances as well. And then annexations, really, if we use the process in the right way, and I think this is important for McMinnville, it's really a way to ensure that future new development is responding to the community needs. So there are different processes cities can take when they're talking about annexations. The one we're recommending to you this evening is one we've talked to you about in the past. We came to you in 2018 and talked about it before we brought it into the MGMUP. But it is one where you, as the city council, really has a lot of opportunity to have discussions with property owners about what you would like to see on their property for future development and how to meet the city's needs and values. We want to talk about the actions that need to take place to implement the new annexation process for the city of McMinnville. It will include amendments to both, to the McMinnville Municipal Code for both chapter 16 and 17. We have provided what we call a draft annexation agreement. That's going to be a tool that you'll use as city council to develop a contract with the property owner on what their performance will need to be to be able to annex into the city. And the provisions of that are really important, so we will walk through that with you this evening. And then we also need to develop annexation fees. We have an annexation fee in our planning fee schedule, but we want to go back and reevaluate that relative to this process. Right now, it's for the older process, and I think with the evaluation, it probably will go down in terms of value. So annexation, just so everyone knows, it's a process by which a municipality, upon meeting certain requirements, expands its corporate limits. And it is governed by Oregon state law. It's governed by OR, what we call ORS Chapter 222. It's also governed by the city charter. It's mentioned in there as well. It's governed by our comprehensive plan. And then here in McMinnville, rather than putting into our city code in the past, we have adopted many different ordinances relative to annexation processes over the years. Legally, it's a proposal for, a proposal for annexation is for bringing land into a city, and it can be initiated either by the legislative body, so you as city council can initiate it, or on its, it could be a petition to you as the city council from the owners of the property who want to be annexed in. The boundaries of the city can be extended by the annexation. That's not within the city, but it needs to be contiguous to the city. So this is coming out of the state law. Or it can be separated from the city by a public right-of-way or stream, bay, lake of other body of water. So that shows, the state law is saying it needs to be next to the city to be able to annex into the city. You can't leapfrog over properties to get to it. And then there is a process for how to annexing properties described in ORS 222.111. In McMinnville, there's been a long history of ordinances relative to annexation, starting in 1981. That's when we put our comp plan together with ordinance number 4130. What's important to know about the ordinances is essentially, they were created in such a way that they're compliant with the state law. So it talks about the same things, that land must be in the UGB, and it must be contiguous to the city limits. The development of the land must meet the comprehensive plan, things of that nature. Originally, the state law said you had to have a public hearing at the planning commission. And then you also had to have a public hearing at the city council level. And so this ordinance states that. And then it also says if an island is created, so if we create an, if we annex all the way around a piece of property, and there's an island that's still in the county, and we have several of those in McMinnville, by the way, it needs to be annexed within one year. That we didn't obviously follow through on. And then if it does come into the city, what's the zoning for? That's been changed over time. The state law has changed. In 1986, you didn't have to have two public hearings. So McMinnville went into the process it has today, which is the public hearings at the planning commission level. They then make a recommendation to city council. City council can elect to act on the recommendation or have their own public hearing. Then in 1993, there were some more amendments in there that responded to changes that were happening at the state level. In 1996, we left out the requirement for the islands that they need to be annexed into the city within one year with some amendments. So we amended it again. But another big thing that happened in 1996 was that there was a vote of the people of McMinnville, a ballot measure that went up in May, where the, the people voted to say, all annexations except those otherwise mandated by state law need to be referred to the local electorate for approval or denial. And so that's a big step that happened then. And that, and ordinance number 4636 is the final ordinance, really, in terms of what we've been operating under for annexations within the city. So the vote by the electorate, there was that local ballot measure that amended the city charter, actually. So the ballot measure amended the city charter. And the city charter now reads explicitly, unless mandated by state law, any annexation delayed or otherwise to the city of McMinnville may only be approved by a prior majority vote among the electorate. In 2016, the Oregon Legislature changed the state law that governs annexations into cities. And they did that because there was, there was presumably cities using the, the provision of going to the local vote, vote to prevent growth in their communities. And so they, they came out in 2016, the Oregon Legislature came out with a Senate bill called Senate Bill 1573. And what that essentially says is that cities whose laws require a petition proposing annexation of territory to be submitted to the electors of the city, if, unless there's a contrary provision that does not allow this, any, any petition from a, from a majority of property owners to be annexed into the city, the city needs to actually annex that territory and if it meets a variety of different performance metrics, meaning that it does not go back to the elective, goes to the voters of the city for decision making. So that's a pretty big piece that we need to come into compliance with. This show, this slide shows you what's on our existing ordinance that's on the books today. It's the same thing that we talked about that was pretty much there originally, except it does have the discussion of referring to the electorate per vote of approval or denial. So our recommendation is that we move forward with a new annexation program based on what's happened with the state laws and based on our discussion with the MGMUP, McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan. And then we embed the annexation requirements actually into the McMinnville city code so that we're not doing this historical search through 10 different ordinances to figure out where we stand today. Because many of those ordinances are either repealing each other or amending each other. And to be honest, a lot of staff don't realize we have so many ordinances that are governing this type of action in the city. And it's not easy for our, our residents and property owners to use either. So we're, we're recommending replacing the existing chapter 16. That's in the McMinnville Municipal Code. That's a chapter entitled Land Division Standards. It actually replicates the land division standards of subdivisions, partitions. That's in chapter 17. Almost word for word, but not entirely. So it creates an issue for us by having two different codes that are addressing the same issue. Chapter 16 is older, chapter 17 is newer. So we're recommending replacing the entire chapter 16, getting that old land division standard out of there, and then devoting chapter 16 to the annexation process. So it's embedded in the city code. And when we make amendments, we just go into the code and make amendments. We're also recommending that we amend chapter 17 to remove any references to annexation processes and procedures, because we, we, after our discussion with you in 2018, and the process that we put into that McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan, we've taken it out of a quasi judicial process and put it into administrative process with you as legislative body making the decisions about how property can annex into the city. And then we have a separate quasi judicial process for how they develop. So to remind you, the McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan process was one that an area plan is done for the land that's in the UGB. So we do this area plan that says this is how this land's going to develop at a high level, where we're going to sign high-density residential parks. where we're going to sign high-density residential parts, amenities, things like that. And it's all based on what we just did through the UGB effort. So it's prescribed in terms of how to meet the need. And then the property owner needs to do a concept master plan. So they need to show us how they're going to respond to that area plan, achieve the elements of the area plan, but on a conceptual level. Then they come to you, the city council, for an annexation agreement. So we negotiate a contract with them and say, "We will move forward with annexation with you based on your concept master plan if you achieve these different types of performance metrics." And then after the annexation agreement is approved by both parties, then the property owner goes through a master plan process. So that's the quasi judicial process, where they'll go through a public hearing process with the planning commission. They'll come up to you for a recommendation for approval or denial. There's criteria already in Chapter 17 that you adopted as to what is a master plan and what needs to be provided in there based on our Great Neighborhood Principles. And then if they are successful with their master plan, then they annex into the city and you take annexation by ordinance of the city council in a public hearing process. So that sets it up where there's opportunity for you to have discussions with the property owner through the annexation agreement process as to what you think the city needs in terms of that property serving the city. So what's in the annexation agreement? That's new for McMinnville. It's used by a lot of communities now. There's several different elements that we're recommending being part of this annexation agreement. And this is kind of like a menu list that we're providing to you tonight to see what are the ones that are compelling to you. And it could be, when we did this in Redmond, the menu list that the council wanted us to have was an extensive menu list. And then we did different negotiations with different property owners based on what we need to see happen in that area of the community as well. So we can use it that way, too. These are draft documents for you. We're not formally adopting them until they're negotiated individually with each property. So there is comprehensive plan zoning information in there where we prescribe that, what I just described to you, that at the time of annexation, the city will apply comprehensive plan designation in the area plan and zoning of the approved master plan to the property if the applicant has applied for that zone change. And usually, they bundle it and do it all together. So that, what that's telling the applicant is, if I do all these things that's in this annexation agreement, and I meet the criteria of the code for the master plan and zone change, at the end of this process, when my city, when my property's annexed in, it's already in an entitled state. It can start moving forward in terms of the master plan and zone change. To do, so the owner also will have to agree to the approval of a concept master plan per Section 1710 of our code. That's usually done concurrent with the annexation agreement. So usually what I've seen, the city council takes a vote on the concept master plan. It's not a quasi judicial process. It's described in the code. It does not being a quasi judicial process. And then you take a vote on the annexation agreement as well. The reason why you do a concept master plan is because if you, the city council, says, "We want more than what's in the code, land use code, for what you need to do with this property", then they have a chance to amend it a little bit before they go through the quasi judicial process. The agreement also says that the owner shall obtain the approval of the final master plan through the quasi judicial process and that they'll comply with the adopted area plan and the Great Neighborhood Principles. Then for public facilities and amenities, the annexation agreement is a time when the city can get dedication of all the necessary public right-of-way that they need or public land. So a lot of cities will visit with the property owner about, "We need public right-of-way here for these streets and this type of infrastructure." And they will dedicate, the owner will then dedicate all of that public right-of-way to the city through this process for the easements as necessary. And the area planning process, as I already described, where we need those bigger elements. There are cities in Redmond that does this, where we also, at the time of the annexation agreement negotiation, negotiate the parks program. And in the annexation agreement, it says that the owner will dedicate the necessary land and develop the park amenities that are identified in the Parks Recreation Master Plan or the area plan for that property, and it spells out what it is. So everyone knows upfront that coming in with this development will be this public park system. And then also whose role is what in terms of financing that. And that's where some of the negotiations come into play. I have seen some annexation agreements that go so far as the neighborhoods, look at neighborhood, community centers or smaller pool areas for that neighborhood, those types of things as part of the annexation. And then the owners agree not to remonstrate. We do this in all of our agreements against the need formation of a future local improvement district for public improvements. Then there's a discussion about community needs and values. So the Affordable Housing Committee has been talking about this at length. And this is the opportunity where, as a community, we can say, "If this land's coming into the city, we really need you to help us with the affordable housing piece of our housing product." And this is something that Ben does and visited with our Affordable Housing Committee about. They, at the annexation agreement level, they say to the property owner, "For you to come into the city, we want you to dedicate X percentage of your housing to affordable housing." So the Affordable Housing Committee has discussed this. They've come up with a couple of tools for this that they're putting together right now. But this is an opportunity where we could have a discussion about the inclusionary zoning that we've been talking about for a couple of years, where we could put into the annexation agreement that you developer needs to allocate, let's say 20% of all housing units to housing serving households of 80% area median income or less. And these household units will be de-restricted for, and we figure out how many years to serve that household demographic. And will be monitored by, we find a partner to monitor it, the housing authority or something like that for compliance. But that's all spelled out in the annexation agreement. So the developer knows what they need to do beforehand, and they figure out how they're going to do it. And we continue to negotiate that way. There also are some cities, and we're exploring this with the Affordable Housing Committee, and this is done and as well, is that for an annexation agreement, they say to the developer, "We want you to donate X percent of your property to the Community Land Trust", and we're talking about propping up a community land trust here, "for the development of affordable housing serving households of 80% area median income or less." And so what that means is, the Community Land Trust owns the underlying land. And then the buildings, the homes are built on it. And the buyer buys the homes, but they don't buy the land underneath it. And what it helps them do is, they're buying the home at a lesser price because they're not buying the land. But they're also able to build equity in their home as it appreciates so that they can then sell that eventually and move into another property where they own both land and structure. And presumably, the Community Land Trust then recycles that type of program for the next affordable housing. There are some communities that look at school funding. So I know in Redmond, we didn't have a school construction excise tax. And so the annexation agreement said that the owner will agree to donate X number of dollars per housing unit to the McMinnville School District. So as these homes are being built, they're impacting the school district and school programs. How can they financially contribute to that outside of just property taxes in terms of the new improvements required? There are some communities where public arts are valued system in that community. This is another thing that Redmond did. One of the Great Neighborhood Principles was public art in the neighborhoods. And so they asked, they had in their annexation agreement that the owner agrees to donate X number of dollars per housing unit to a public art fund that then funds public art that goes in that neighborhood. So a lot of property owners liked that one because there was a requirement for them to perform to. And they were able to just put the money into fund the public art committee through the selection process and installation and met the requirement. And then there's other cities that in the annexation agreement just put additional fees into it. So this is an example from Springfield, where based on the type of annexation in terms of size, they pay a certain amount of fees for each acre. That just contributes to the cost of bringing that property online into the community, into the community program and servicing. So for the next steps for annexations, we want to bring back to you amendments to Chapter 16 and Chapter 17. And we did provide you what our suggested amendments were for that in draft form with that package that you received. Amendments in the McMinnville Municipal Code, that would need to go to a public hearing at Planning Commission with notice because it is amended in Chapter 17, so it was carried Chapter 16 with it. And then it's a final decision of city council. We would need to develop annexation fees and what that looks like for full cost recovery and annexation process. You have planning and the city recorder and city attorney involved. Planning's involved at a different level. We already have master plans, fees, and our planning fees got to go for that process. So it would just, it would be at the coordination level. That's where I think there might be some reductions right now. But annexation fee includes the cost of putting it on the ballot for May or November. And so there's, that's a fairly substantial cost. And then the other thing we need to do is agree on the draft provisions for the annexation agreement. Because like I said, there are some properties who are already in play that want to start moving forward with this program. So that's our presentation for tonight. What we'd like to do is get feedback from you on either the proposed code amendments, which replicate the process we just talked about and we've talked about in the past and was part of the McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan. And then also feedback on the, what we are recommending as provisions to think about for the annexation agreement. Did we miss anything? Is there something that you just don't even want to occur that be part of any negotiated process with a property owner? Then we can take that off the table as well.
Thank you, Heather. So let's go ahead and just open it up to the council. Why don't you take your slides down so we can see everyone, Heather, and have a discussion among council as to the presentation this evening? I know this is, we've had a lot of discussion around this, but this is the first opportunity we've had to have it brought back to us in a, in a, in a format that Heather would like to see us move forward with. So, council, I know, I know Remy had a couple of questions that were answered before she took off of, out of town. And Heather, you were able to answer those, I would say on behalf of the Affordable Housing Committee.
Yes, so Council Drapkin wanted to make sure that the housing provisions that the Affordable Housing Committee is recommending was part of the dialogue.
Go ahead, Chris.
So I have a concern, well, maybe not a concern, maybe that's too strong of a language, but it looks like that whatever was voted on by the people is actually part of the charter. Does that stay there as a result of everything we're doing? And how does that impact what we're doing?
It stays. The charter language stays.
And how does that impact what we're doing? Does that, does that language still then require us to follow what's in the charter?
So it doesn't, it doesn't impact what we're doing because as Heather noted in her staff report, there was a case, a case out of Corvallis that went to the Oregon Court of Appeals, where after that state statute was passed in 2016, Corvallis challenged whether or not it was actually mandated to accept... Let me step back. Corvallis has the same charter language that we have, which is...
Unless mandated by state law.
Unless mandated by state law, you have to go to the electorate for a vote for annexation. And when the state passed its Senate, that Senate bill, which essentially said, "Hey, if every property owner signs off on the annexation and agrees to it, you don't do a vote. It just gets approved by the legislative, by the city council." And Corvallis challenged whether or not that was actually then a mandate by state law, under state law. And the Court of Appeals said, "Yes, it is." So what that means for the 35-plus cities that have the exact same language as we do is that if every property owner signs, agrees to an annexation and it meets the requirements, as Heather said, of being contiguous to the city limits and, you know, meeting whatever other requirements we have, we are not allowed to put it to a vote of the people. It has to go to just the council for consideration.
So another way, another way to say that, though, is that if it hits that criteria, then the state statutes overrule home rule, correct?
Correct, exactly. It's expressly contradictory at that point. And Council Chenoweth, I did do some research on where that language came from. There's some debate about whether or not it originated with Corvallis or originated with the League of Oregon Cities putting out a model charter code because they happened, charter because they happened right about the same time several decades ago. But the reason it looks like for it is that at that time, there were already state mandates for not putting annexations to vote, to a vote, particularly when there's an abatement of a health hazard. So there, there were already provisions in statutes where local jurisdictions were not allowed to require a vote of the people, which is why that initial clause in that sentence is there.
So what was the intent of the voters in passing this? And maybe even the League of Oregon Cities in passing these statements all throughout our state? What were the voters trying to accomplish? And let me get to where I'm concerned. The reason I'm asking this question is I'm concerned about us just coming along and saying, "We, as a council, are superior to the vote of our constituents." And whether I agree with them or disagree with them is kind of irrelevant. Full disclosure, I frankly think that putting it up to a vote every time is problematic for planning and for everything else that we're doing. But I also don't want to be in a position where I am overriding the will of those, of the voters. I think that's sacrosanct. So I guess I kind of like to understand what was the intent behind all that?
I have a, I have a question, though. I mean, whether we make any changes or not, we can't send these to the voters, right?
Correct. The state law won't allow them.
So I, I'm not following...
The state of Oregon in 2016 already made it moot, right?
Right, so I guess, Chris, I'm not following the concern.
It doesn't go to a vote now regardless of whatever changes we're going to make.
We can't send it to a vote, so...
So in other words, are you saying then, okay, I can get, I can get that statement.
Yeah.
I just, I just don't want to be in that position. If we're not doing that, that's great. That would be a good way to rephrase that.
Man, I mean, I agree with Chris, actually. I used to like the fact that we could vote on annexations, you know? But it did slow that down. It was problematic, and the legislature just changed the law. So we don't have any say in it anymore. So aligning with what the legislature requires probably doesn't hurt us at all, I don't think.
Okay.
Yeah, so if, if the, you know, so if the intention was to slow growth down, that's what the state law is trying to prevent happening because the UGB is where you're intended to grow into. However, if the intent was, in McMinnville, you also had to have, provide your development plan, and that was voted on, right? So presumably, it was voted on because people could vote on the development plan and not actually the slowing down of growth. And so by putting together the process that we put together, we're trying to replicate that. So by putting together a process where they have to do a concept master plan to you as the city council for the annexation agreement, they're already putting on the table what their development plan is. And then it also gives you the opportunity, city council, to say, "We'd also like you to do these other things. Affordable housing, if we want to do that, you know, the other provisions." Then they have to go through a final master plan quasi judicial process. So they have to take their development plan through a quasi judicial process, public hearing with Planning Commission, up to you as city council for final approval before they annex in. So we've tried to build into the process that same sort of development plan review that was part of the ballot measure review. If that makes sense.
Yeah, then this other question I would have is on this island portion of this, where it's talking about, we have, if we have an island, we have to get the annex within one year. You made kind of a comment in the midst of that, that we already had that problem in existence right now. So I guess my question would be then, what is the procedure and what is the steps? Should that happen to rectify it? I mean, do we not have a way? If we, if we already weren't supposed to have islands, and we do have islands?
Yeah, so that's a great question, counselor. Amanda and I didn't really talk about this in advance, but... So the islands are because those property owners don't want to annex. But so the islands are because those property owners don't want to annex into the city. And they still don't want to annex into the city because we've contacted them. I haven't worked in a city that had islands in the city before. So when I got here, we reached out and we were like, because if you recall, over by Grand, is it by Grand Haven? There's a road that dips down and then comes back up and goes across because there's a big property that's in the county, not in the city. So they still don't want to annex into the city. So what cities can do, that's why I read to you the law, cities can initiate their own annexation. So you as a legislative body can initiate your own legislation. I'm assuming that's what the intent was of the ordinance that says annexation will happen within one year. So if you property owner don't do it, we'll do it. What's interesting to me is that the Senate bill that passed, this is where there's a hole. And LOC has been trying to fix this hole for the last several years. When the Senate bill passed, it doesn't allow the electorate to vote on annexations. It passed on the basis of where the property owner is providing consent that they want to annex in. So if the city initiates an island annexation and that property owner does not want to annex in, I'm assuming that still goes to a vote for the electorate based on what's in our charter.
So in other words, then that statement that it shall be annexed within a year is really variable. It's not really a definitive statement. It may or may not happen depending on whether we may or may not instigate the annexation ourselves and then whether or not we get a successful vote of the people should that get triggered.
Yeah, so that's a policy decision that was built into the ordinances, right? But it's not an action.
It's not definitive.
The action needs to take place.
That's what I have for you for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Other questions from councilors?
I just have a couple of comments.
Go ahead, Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say Amanda and Heather, you guys did a really good job of pulling this together. I like the direction of the, really all of the concepts that you are bringing forward just for consideration. You know, adding affordable housing as a requirement for annexation is something that I appreciate. I didn't hear you mention anything and maybe I just missed it, but I'm, of course, very concerned about, you know, preservation of heritage trees and those kinds of spaces within our community. And I just may have missed it, but did you hit on that? And what are the provisions in this for that? And then I have a follow-up after that.
Okay, and you didn't miss it, but you teed me up really well and we didn't organize this in advance. So we don't have an inventory of natural features that we want to protect, including historic trees or landmark trees and tree stands, I would say, as well. So right now, based on your direction earlier this year when we passed the UGB, you gave us direction to do that inventory work. We've done it and we have a final draft and we're going to bring that to you. We were just talking about this morning. Bring it to you over the next four months for adoption. Once we adopt that, then we'll, and it's for the UGB and the city. So it's identified all the natural features in the UGB as well and cultural resources. There's some archaeological things that we've discovered. So Lake Oswego has annexation policies in their annexation agreement that protect those resources that are on their inventory when annexation comes in. And so once we get that adopted and passed, we'll have something we can refer to and say, when you're coming in for development, you need to protect these things.
Sal, can I ask a question on the heels of that, in that vein?
Go ahead, Zach.
Okay, okay. Would that dovetail with the creation of something like a natural resource zone or a significant resource zone overlay? Or would that just be its own thing about heritage trees?
So what we're gonna, actually what we're doing is bringing in, so our natural features, so this is what we call Goal Five work. Our natural features inventory will actually bring in to you a recommended map of where these are located, how we identify them and what they are. Repairian corridors, tree stands, because those are ecological systems, as well as heritage trees. And we brought scenic views into it too as part of our Great Neighborhood Principles. And then we're going to bring in to you recommended content policies and development code that protect those items from development when development occurs.
I'd also just add that...
The inventory will do it.
That one of the things that is laid out in doing, as Heather described, the area plan and then the concept master plan and then the final master plan, is there is this legislative process right at the area plan level where the council and the community can talk about things. I mean, we might have overarching policies for the whole city or the entire UGB, but if there's a particular area that needs something addressed, that can be addressed also in the area planning process and the master planning process as well. So in addition to anything overarching this with overarching the entire city or the entire UGB, we also do have the ability to look at the specific areas that we're talking about where development will occur.
Yeah, and I guess if we did, if we, playing it out, I don't see this happening, but if we annex property in before we've adopted any of these inventories, you could with the annexation agreement, use the draft inventories to protect those resources.
Only post-annexation?
Well, it's under, it's, yes, so that's a great point, Zach. And so it's under, or Counselor Gary, sorry.
Counselor Gary's my dog, it's okay.
Right now, the UGB land is under county jurisdiction, right? So we don't, we can adopt as many policies as we want. It's not our jurisdiction. So the next step outside of this annexation process, which we're working on in the next couple of months as well, is updating what we call our UGB management agreement with the county. And that's a contract between the city and the county that says, this is how we are going to collectively manage these lands in the UGB to ensure that the city values are, you know, moved forward as it sits in the county land before it comes into the city. That document hasn't been updated since the 70s, so it needs to be updated. And it will have a lot of things in it. It will have, we could put the natural resources discussion in and natural features or reference our inventories for that. We can also, we're gonna have to have a discussion about streets because we have historically not annexed in streets. And we have county streets in the city that aren't built to city standards. And, you know, just there's all sorts of things we're gonna have to talk about between the two agencies for that agreement process. But we've assigned a lead planner to work on that with the county to be able to bring you a draft and we'll be working with both councils on that as well, legal councils.
Let's go back to, are you done, Zach? Let's go back to...
Well, I had another...
I'm gonna move on from that point. So Zach, if you wanted to follow up, this would be the time I better...
A little bit, but I don't want to gear us too far off topic. So I'll just bring it up when we could eat a table of it for later or not. But on the subject of sort of this preservation discussion, that's preservation in terms of areas that are annexing in or future annexations, you know, like what you just talked about in that UGB pending zone. What about stuff that's already here and in? Be able to plan for getting that to be protected?
So that inventory is citywide. The inventory work we did was citywide and UGB-wide. And so that's what we...
Will we need to create a zone to apply to those or that will just take effect?
It won't be a zone, it will be, it will be an inventory because these items aren't, they're not large enough in terms of geographic area to put a zone on it. So it will be an inventory that will list where they are and that they need to be protected, just like our historic landmarks inventory.
Cool.
We are, we are working on, just so you know, we did Goal Seven work, which is what you directed us to do. That's the hazards work. That is larger area, so we are recommending an overlay zone for that. And we'll be bringing that in at the same time, too.
Copy that. Thanks. Sal back?
Go ahead, Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, this is more of a comment, but it is a comment rather than a question, but just a philosophical kind of statement. A lot of the work that you put in was related to cost recovery. And so philosophically, I guess I would just say that I tend to favor new development, paying for new development rather than the existing tax base subsidizing substantially the cost of that new development. So I just wanted to throw that out there philosophically. I don't know whether other members of the council are on that. But when you're looking at fees and stuff and assigning costs, I just, I just think that as we, as we bring in, especially in a city like this one that's kind of land constrained and where the incomes are a little less than the cost of the land, I just think that we want to make sure that the folks that are moving in are the ones paying the freight rather than the folks who are already here. So, thank you.
Good point. Other questions from councilors?
Mayor, Counselor Menke has her hand up.
Go ahead, Kelly.
I too would like to put my two cents worth in on the annexation part of being able to do the incremental housing increases and to do the land reserve. I think those are part and parcel of what we've been working on in the Affordable Housing Committee for a long time. Really want to see that. And I also agree with Sal, I mean, right down the line of yours tonight, on the full cost recovery by the people that are developing this. I think it's important.
Thank you, Counselor Menke. Other comments?
Looks like Counselor Gary has his hand raised.
Go ahead, Zach. And then add a...
The sirens go, the sirens going by aren't too loud. Some of our finest getting it done out there? Okay, I think they're by now. The, I think, germane to Sal's question as well as your question about, as you bring this back, that fee schedule, I would be in line with Sal's point. I think secondly, really, it's just a comment to say, thanks for bringing this back. This seems like a really robust tool to handle this development as it comes in and allow us to really get more out of things that come in and get more for selected needs, like we've talked about. You know, I know as we're, you know, fire districting and trying to spread out little pocket ways we could serve and disperse into the community with little, you know, fire stations or community hubs or garages and neighborhood garages and things like that could be, I mean, the possibilities are abound. And so I think this is a really cool opportunity. So it seems like this will alleviate some of those development frustrations we've had in the past or I won't lump everyone into that I have had in the past. So thanks, this looks really good.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go over to Counselor Gary or, excuse me, Counselor Garvin. Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Heather, for the presentation tonight. I just wanted to second some comments from Counselor Gary and Peralta on bringing this forward and giving us a more robust look at this land coming in. And just really appreciate you being forefront on it and look forward to it coming back. And I'd also like to second Counselor Peralta's thoughts on, you know, the people coming in are paying the freight and not the people that are already here paying the freight. So other than that, thank you for the great presentation.
Thank you, Adam. You know, as I look back over the good work we've been doing over the last two, two and a half, three years, when the heavy lift on the Great Neighborhood Principles, community centers, those types of things, I feel this update gives us better control over, better community development than we've had before. You know, we've seen how the voting on annexation kind of hurt us out in the sudden claim area out on Baker Creek. We weren't able to do what we needed to do. And now we have bits and pieces out there where we had a great master plan that the community just didn't want to have the growth. But as Heather's mentioned, the UGB and all the heavy lifting we do with that, we set the parameters so we grow into that. And so although not a voting on this, I sustain all this great work. I sustain, you know, that the new developments pay their own way and we don't lay it on the backs of those that are already here that have paid it through their property. I'll tell you, I've been talking to some people that I've seen newer communities now where a part of new community developments being approved, they do, they have HOA fees that take care of the parks. And so they don't put an additional burden on the cities. And through HOA fees over a long period, they have parks in. And so there's some innovative things that are happening out in some of these communities where there's a great need for growth. But I love it that we can come back and put provisions for affordable housing into this. And we're going to see some growth coming with this UGB amendment that we've done and the growth potential there. We need to get ahead of it than being behind it like we have. So Heather and Amanda and staff, thank you so very much for your fine work and giving us the opportunity to look at it carefully. You'll go back and take some of our feedback and be back to us. Again, I'll just open it up for anyone that would have closing comments out of the council this evening. Kelly?
Yes, I want to thank Heather and all of her staff and Amanda too. I mean, when you think of how much this planning group has accomplished over the last year, I mean, well, not even to mention the last six years or five years, I think it's just absolutely amazing. I'm so excited about the hazardous land, lands issues. I'm excited about the tree inventory and things like that. That's fabulous, you know. And to finally get some of these low-income housing out of the annexation process is just phenomenal. We're finally making some real headway, people. And it's all because of this amazing staff and the councilors of the vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly. Chris?
I just want to echo what was said by Kelly and just say I'm very appreciative of the amount of effort that's gone into this. It's one thing to say we want to plan intentionally. It's a whole nother thing to put everything in place so we can plan intentionally. And so I do very much appreciate the efforts that have gone into this. I appreciate the responsiveness that I have found with the staff when I've called with questions, the quick response and the quick answers. I'm very grateful for it. It helps me to not look like a terrible idiot when I get on the screen. And so I appreciate that greatly. And just want, do want to say, in principle, I agree that I'd like to see the dollars predominantly be paid by those as they come in for what they're getting. But I also don't want to inadvertently be burdening in other ways and preventing growth that we could otherwise have within other sectors of our community because we have put too much in that area. So I just, I want to be concerned not to, I mean, end up resulting in, for instance, pricing out local and small business folks from doing development themselves and resulting in only very large corporations being able to do that. So that would be one concern I would have. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Chris. Well, Heather, great presentation. Anything that you need from us tonight further than what we've already given to you?
I don't think so. First of all, thank you for all your support. We can't do what we do without your support. What I'm hearing is that the provisions that we've put together, sort of draft template for the annexation agreement, are good for you in terms of consideration as you move forward with negotiations in the future. It doesn't mean all of them will be imparted into each annexation agreement, but it gives you a menu list to work from. If there are red flags in there, let us know. Those won't be actions coming to you with the municipal code update, so we have time to work through all of that. But we do have property owners who are on this line, I think, right now, waiting to annex into the city.
Well, thank you. If that's the end of our discussion this evening on annexation, we have, we've been very efficient tonight. It is 7:30, so we've done quite well. So with that being said, I will go ahead and adjourn the work session this evening and thank everyone for their time and efforts. Thank you all.